October 8th, 2024, meeting of the Oshkosh Council. If the city clerk could please take the roll.
Esslinger?
Here.
Flom?
Here.
Bulo?
Here.
Stevenson, I believe, is going to be absent. Nichols?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Mugrower?
Here.
We have six present.
Leading us in the invocation this evening will be Councilmember Esslinger.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent.
And then this evening, we have a student, Logan Hammond, from Valley Christian Elementary School here to help lead us in the pledge. Logan, if you wouldn't mind coming on up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Very well done. As I mentioned, we have Logan Hammond here from Valley Christian School. I've got a certificate of appreciation for you tonight. I want to say thank you for coming. Maybe if you wouldn't mind, tell us maybe who your teacher or teachers are there at Valley Christian and if you have a favorite subject.
Okay, hello, my name's Logan. I have two fifth grade teachers. My first one is Mrs. Jodarski and I am Mrs. Dureen, and my favorite subject is science.
Very nice. Well, again, thank you for coming tonight and helping lead us in the pledge. There you go. I promised to be out of here by 6:03. Nailed it. Depending on which clock you're looking at. And then next up, we actually have, we have a special evening here. We have a proclamation, and this has to do with kind of a sister fire company in Lima, Peru. This evening, we have Fire Chief Tiano, and he leads the RE/MAC 21 Fire Company in Lima. Fire Chief Stanley and your guest, if you wouldn't mind coming on up. We also have State Representative Palmieri here along with us this evening to present a special proclamation as well. This evening, I'll be reading a proclamation that I issued on behalf of the City of Oshkosh commemorating our partnership with the RE/MAC 21 Fire Company in Lima. So in 2018, the City of Oshkosh donated a fire, excuse me, an ambulance unit from our inventory that had well passed its useful life and celebrating that this evening here. So whereas in 2018, the ambulance that had previously served our unit, excuse me, whereas the RE/MAC National Volunteer Fire Company, number 21, had served the citizens of RE/MAC with a population of over 180,000 in Lima Province in Peru for more than a century. And whereas in 2018, that ambulance had previously served their unit dating back from 1985, became inoperable, and they were left without the ability to provide medical attention to citizens. And whereas through a partnership with the Rotary Clubs of RE/MAC and Oshkosh, the Oshkosh Fire Department donated a retired ambulance to the RE/MAC community in 2020. And whereas the ambulance, which contains a logo and lettering that acknowledges the Oshkosh Fire Department's donation, is now serving their community as the department's only ambulance, whereas the donation and the transport of the ambulance to Peru could not have happened without the support of Rotary International Clubs in both Oshkosh and RE/MAC. And whereas the RE/MAC 21 Fire Department recently celebrated their 104th anniversary of being in service, and whereas the Oshkosh Fire Department looks forward to strengthening the relationship between the two departments and creating opportunities for future donations of equipment and apparatus from Wisconsin to Peru, and to collaborate on training opportunities that will benefit all of the firefighters involved. Now therefore, I, Matt Mugrower, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, in honor of the visit from the RE/MAC 21 Fire Department's Chief David Ernesto Tiano, do hereby proclaim October 8th, 2024, as RE/MAC National Volunteer Fire Company number 21 day in the City of Oshkosh.
Thank you. It gives me great pleasure to be here this evening to give this state of Wisconsin citation by the state legislature. Know you by these presents, whereas Compañía de Bomberos RE/MAC 21 has served the people of RE/MAC in the Lima Province of Peru for the past 108 years. And whereas their last functioning ambulance dated back to 1985 and in 2018 became inoperable, leaving the Compañía de Bomberos RE/MAC 21 without the necessary equipment to provide medical aid to citizens. And whereas in 2020, the Oshkosh Fire Department donated a retired ambulance through a partnership between the Rotary Clubs of RE/MAC and Oshkosh. And whereas to this date, the ambulance donated in 2020 is the only ambulance serving the community and acknowledges its origins in the Oshkosh Fire Department with a logo. And whereas this would not have been possible without the support and dedication of the Rotary International Clubs in Oshkosh and RE/MAC, which helped coordinate both the transport and donation of the ambulance. And whereas the Oshkosh Fire Department hopes to continue creating avenues for future donations of equipment, along with opportunities for collaborative training that will benefit all firefighters involved. And therefore, I, Representative Lori Palmieri, on behalf of the Wisconsin State Legislature, hereby recognize Compañía de Bomberos RE/MAC 21 and Fire Chief Dave Ernesto Tiano for their over 100 years of dedicated service to the community of RE/MAC and to the Oshkosh Fire Department for their continued efforts to foster opportunities between the two departments.
I think the mic went out, Lori.
Yeah, I kind of figured.
So Chief David explained to me that he's also presenting you guys with recognition for a Medal of Disseminated Service from their fire company for the partnership and support that you guys have provided to them through the donation of the ambulance. So he's got those two for you, and then these two medals he wants to present to you guys as well.
Before we move on, just a very cool opportunity, obviously, to have the chief here tonight. But as well as, I remember when this occurred, the donation occurred just a couple of years ago, the social media impact of it and the sharing of this equipment into South America and into Peru. Just a great partnership between the Rotary Clubs and to help us move that equipment into another useful life. So thank you again, chief, for coming, and I'm glad the equipment's been so useful in your community.
And Mayor, I'll just pass on, I'm a member of the Oshkosh Rotary Club.
Yes.
And I will share this with them as well. They love our partnerships in Peru. We do many things with the Rotary Club in your community, and we'll continue to do so in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We also issued one other proclamation this evening, it was for the White Can Safety Day, which is celebrated on October 15th, 2024, for those with vision and mobility issues. Citizen statements to council. I'm sorry, I'm a little off tonight. I didn't get this set up in advance. Give me just a moment. Suspect we have a couple here. Looks like I have a number of residents on the 7th Avenue, probably all under citizen statements. So if you'd like, we have Lee Faust. Lee and Rebecca Faust would be first up, followed by Aaliyah Carroll. Come on up to the microphone. Welcome.
It's just me. There's no, it's just Lee Faust.
Okay, sounds great.
Can I request a little additional time? I do have a short video I would like to present.
If we can try to keep it under, normally it's five, if we can keep it under six, that's...
Yeah, I don't know how long it's going to take me, but it shouldn't be too much longer.
This is regards to the property 411 West 7th Avenue. My father has lived on the property for 60 years. I grew up there, and I can tell you from living there, he has never had this issue prior to the recent reconstruction project being done. Water is flowing into his foundation through the block and is pouring into the sump pump at an alarming rate. His sump pump is kicking on and running every 20 seconds. That's a constant rate. I am over there constantly monitoring this, and that is how quickly the pit is filling up. This has been going on since September 19th, and his sump pump is literally running thousands of times per day. There was a power outage September 23rd, at which time my father's basement immediately flooded. At the rate the water is flowing in, within minutes, his basement was flooded. His furnace in his basement, as well as the water heater, I showed Casey Kennedy, I believe that's how I pronounce his name, and Craig, his supervisor, the recent floodwater marks on a table and bench to where the water had risen in the short time the power was out. The power was out for roughly an hour and a half. In that short amount of time, the water level had four inches risen in the basement. The basement is constantly wet with standing water on the floor, even after cleanup, because the water is coming right through the block. There is a lot of pressure around the foundation and walls because of the excessive groundwater. This was relayed to me by Mike Plummer, and he has also informed me the sump pump is wearing out. It's making bearing noises. I had contacted him in regards to having to back up some pump on hand for when the pump wears out. There are areas where mold is starting to form, and upstairs is getting a musty smell now. As soon as you enter the home, you can smell the mustiness. It is impossible to dry out the basement, even with fans running, because of the constant water flowing through the mortar and block. The ground outside, where they're planning to pour the south side of the street, is wet from groundwater, or the tunnel might be leaking, but escaping from below. The concrete will never set properly and will sink and break apart. I have researched this personally on the internet, and I've spoken to a professional concrete gentleman who has 40-plus years of experience pouring concrete, and he confirmed this to be true. So if they pour that within a very short timeframe, they're going to be ripping that back apart. We have just had perfect drying conditions, being sunny, windy, with only a trace of rain over two weeks, yet the ground remains wet and the sump pumps are still running. If we get any measurable amount of rain, the sump pump will not be able to keep up. This past spring and early summer, we experienced a tremendous amount of rainfall. It's one of the wettest summers ever recorded for the state of Wisconsin. The month of June alone received 6.97 inches of rain for the state. That's 48% above normal. Yet the property did not experience anything like what we're dealing with now. There was only slight dampness in the basement, and the sump pump was not running cycle times of 20 seconds. I was personally there to verify this. As I'm helping my father to take care of his property, we also have plumbing contractor work doing during this timeframe, and they can attest to the condition of the basement as they had their tools and building supplies stored down there. The stress that I've dealt with in dealing with this issue has been absolutely overwhelming. I wake up every night and start thinking about and worrying about the sump pump burning out or another power outage that causes the basement to immediately flood. It's almost like dealing with a major thunderstorm with torrential rain that's coming every night of your life. The water issue we're dealing with is that severe to these properties. The tunnel that they've just replaced had been redone on the other side of the street around 25 years ago and was doing an adequate job. The properties were not having any groundwater flooding issues. The only problem that arose was when we had the major city flood in Oshkosh of 2008, where 5.4 inches of rain fell in a couple of hours, and the entire city of Oshkosh was flooded. According to Casey Kennedy, they're planning on adding another water source near Highway 41 and tying it into this tunnel. The water level in the tunnel is already right up to the top. I don't see how you can possibly add any more water to this tunnel. It's overwhelmed already, and once again, it has not been raining. The rainwater will also be fed into this tunnel. I initially contacted Casey Kennedy on Monday, September 23rd, with no response back. I waited a few days, and I went down to City Hall on Thursday, September 26th, and spoke to his supervisor, Alyssa Deckert. She took down some brief notes and informed me that nobody would be available to speak with me, as they were all out of the office until next Monday. Once again, no one contacted me back. So finally, on October 4th, I called Casey again and asked if he would come to the property to see what we were dealing with. So that was 12 days before anyone showed up to even acknowledge the problem that we were dealing with. For the city to say that these properties have always had this ongoing flooding issue and that their sump pumps always run like that is absolutely ridiculous. How can you make a statement like that when you've never lived on the property or even been in the home? That's just showing their ignorance and total apathy to the problem they have caused, along with zero acceptance of responsibility. Oshkosh has just gone through a citywide reassessment. If you cannot fix this issue that you've created, then buy out the property owners at the current assessed value, and you can deal with this extremely detrimental issue. The total apathy in regards to this issue is unbelievable. I was told by Casey on October 4th, and I'm quoting him, "This is just something you're going to have to deal with." That is a completely unacceptable response. Wasn't the whole purpose of the tunnel reconstruction project to make things better? You have created an intolerable living situation for numerous property owners on 7th Avenue. I do have pictures provided, as well as a short video, if there is time to present that.
You've gone a little bit over. Is this the same video and pictures that we received as part of an email, I believe, from, I don't want to say it wrong, Aaliyah Carroll?
No.
Okay.
No. I handed the pictures to, I turned them down to City Clerk's office today.
Those were scanned and emailed to you?
Okay, we've received those.
So they did receive those?
Yes, we did.
I mean, how do you present them down now? Can I show this video then?
How long is the video? Just so I know.
Two minutes and 12 seconds, I believe.
So we've already gone several minutes over.
I did request time.
Yep, and I've given you more.
Okay.
And we've got a few other, I think, that are going to speak to the same issue, so...
Mayor, I'd say in light of the situation, this is a very serious issue. I don't think giving him a couple extra minutes would be detrimental.
Councilmembers? Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you have the ability to play it?
Today's Friday, October 4th. Once again, I'm showing a incredible amount of water that's flowing in both sides of my sump pump pit here. It's hit from both sides at a ridiculous rate. The street of, uh, was not slowed down at one point. Also, the medium paper office is hanging on, this is not finished, but, uh, have all the same continuing issues. Water's leaking all along the base here. All along it. Next to the east. Here, here, some north. When they redid the tunnel outside, but I know tunnel, it's obviously leaking, it's pouring water all like crazy. Once again, nobody's come here from the city. My sister contacted the Herald, but they didn't, no resolution there, didn't hear either. There's water just leaking all along the base. There's some west side, just leaking all along here. That sump pump has not been running like this now. I'd say, well, over two weeks, continues to run at less than a 20-second cycle time. So if you start to think about that, the sump pump is actually running three times eight minutes. Uh, there's 60 minutes and an hour. There's a crazy time to sump pump will say, run an hour. I figure they hope for a day. I cannot believe it's still running to be honest with you. Right now, as I speak, the city is outside, they're still playing and pouring. And I cannot believe it, because the ground out there is wet. You can see the street is wet, and there is plenty, I guess, of water right over the top of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Aaliyah Carroll, followed by Julie Clintworth. Welcome.
I'll put my timer on, I'll try to stick to five minutes. First, I just will reference a part of our grievance letter that me and my neighbors have collaboratively worked on. So on the evening of Thursday, September 19th, without any rain, water started gushing into our sump pump pits, causing our yards and streets to flood with just the discharge alone. A police report was filed, however, despite our efforts to notify the city representatives to help rectify this damage, the water has not stopped draining into our sump pit, sump pump pits since this event. We discovered groundwater levels have risen to a couple of feet below ground level, directly caused by this reconstruction project. Meaning, the groundwater is now surrounding our foundations, adding pressure to our foundations, causing seepage and deterioration from our, or of our properties, while causing this continuous flow of water into our pits. As a result, our sump pump pits have been continuously running since September 19th, without any rain, very little to no rain. Our sump pumps are running anywhere from 10 seconds to a few minutes, depending on the property. This event has been severely alarming. It is abnormal for our sump pumps to run this consistently, keeping in mind, again, there's been no rain. Before the reconstruction project, our basements were dry, and our sump pumps would run during the rainfall, maybe spring fall, or spring thaw. So now every day, we have to anxiously wait for the days that our sump pump burn out from endless use. We dread rainfall, as our properties are now extremely vulnerable to flooding, and we're astonished by how much our property values have been negatively impacted by the CIP project. I'm going to read a letter from my plumber as well. To whom it concerns, Jay Cox Plumbing has been servicing the residents of 417 West 7th Ave for the last few years. In recent, in the recent couple of weeks, while working on updating the plumbing, I noticed the sump pump discharge outside of the residence was spraying water every five seconds. I quickly ran to the pipe to the storm drain that was recently installed in her yard. When looking down inside of the storm drain, I noticed that the water level is extremely high. If you transfer this level to the foundation of our house, it would be roughly four to five feet above the basement floor. Aaliyah made the smart decision to add a battery backup system just in case of loss of power, and in the process of the install, I noticed her foundation is leaking in a couple of different areas. This basement was dry, and the sump pump rarely went off before the construction of her road. I'm concerned if her sump pump dies, her basement will be quickly taken over by the high water that was brought in from the recent work on the road. So, since the city has now artificially raised the groundwater level, and the overflow from this underground river is continuously flooding our properties, I am very fearful. I share the same anxiety that Lee has shared as well. So now I have to think, I think constantly, what will happen when it rains? Because my basement will flood now, when it rains. Will my appliances, water heaters, furnaces be damaged? What if the power goes out? How long will this battery backup on this new system even last? What if it's a Saturday night and my plumber isn't available to change out my sump pump? What happens then? How long will my sump pump last? How many times a year do I need to replace this sump pump? And how long before my foundation begins to deteriorate from being submerged underwater? What if my basement walls cave in due to too much pressure? Will I even ever be able to sell this house anymore, now that I have constant water pouring into my sump pump pit? How much has my value of my property been depreciated because of this project? Will the city even listen and help me? The damage to the CIP project has shown as immediate and noticeable. The water damage is clearly going to destroy my home if it is left unaddressed. My mental health has suffered from this ongoing damage, and I'm forced to live with my phone beside me 24 hours a day, waiting for the notice of my sump pump failure. I have to have it on loud 24 hours a day, when I'm sleeping, in meetings. Now imagine, again, my sump pump fails, and it's a Sunday at midnight. Who do you call to replace the sump pump? And if my battery backup lasts four hours max, you guys can do the math, my basement will be flooded. So I insist, going forward, that the city reverses the damages caused by the CIP project and compensates me for the preventable expenses that I've incurred, including the new sump, new sump pump system I had to install and flood insurance, nearly $4,000. I've been consulting with a lawyer on this case, but I'm hoping that the city will take our grievance seriously and work quickly, quickly to fix this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Julie Clintworth, followed by Court Lakash. Welcome.
I've been a property owner, resident, for 14 years. During those 14 years, basement water... During those 14 years, basement water infiltration has not been an issue. Some pump worked when needed, spring thaw, summer rains. With the new and supposed improved, improvements to the road, what has changed? Basement water infiltration is now a common occurrence. In a basement for 14 years that was dry. A compromised basement floor with cracks and fissures. That I have to repair. Continuous some pump activation. Increased utility bill because of this. A shifting foundation, how do I know it's shifting? I have plaster walls in the house. I see horizontal and vertical cracks beginning to develop. Who's going to take care of that? And diminish property values. My hope is that the council, city manager, engineering department, director of public works, will take our concerns and be proactive. Do not give us empty platitudes. Do not tell us, well, you'll have to live with it now. Step up. We are here as residents, as taxpayers, we want resolutions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Court Lakash, followed by Marcia Lakash. Welcome.
Welcome, thanks for hearing. Um, I'm here today for 433 7th Avenue. Um, we were here, owned the house during floods in 2008. Had to put furnace in, water heater, whole works. Um, since that time, the house has been dry. We kept, my wife and I kept the house, my mom resides in it. Thought it was a nice community, um, kept it for her, safe. At the beginning of this project, I kept telling her, yes, it's gonna get worse as this project goes on. It's going to be a very big project, but it will come to an end. Um, as we're coming to an end now, I see things getting worse. Box culvert like that, which is supposed to take storm water away, is 100% full. We're supposed to be in a drought right now and it's over the top of the rings. I would like to have, um, get some kind of, for the spec sheets, should be public record. What this thing's supposed to be filled up at? If the rings on top on the discharges for the drains on the side of the road, is it supposed to be full to the top? We're within six inches of the top of the road and we don't even have any rut, any rain. It's supposed to be a drought. How is it supposed to carry water away? Um, I believe the rings were not on top, so all the level from the Winnebago system was dumping into our front yards. Is that an engineering thing? I don't know, I was not on part of that. But in my experience over the years, as a plumber, steamfitter, union member, I've never seen a drainage ditch like that, that full, when we didn't have rain. Again, it should be public record, I'd like to see some spec sheets on this and engineering. To know that it's been put in right. Again, I wanted to have the same place for my mom to live and it's getting pretty rough. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcia Lakash. Welcome.
I'm hoping that I can get through this on for you. And that's my son. Um, I have been there approximately 13 years. I came up from Racine. I, I had no problem living on my street. I wonder if any of you even know where 7th Avenue is? I would ask you, do you know? Or do you live on the north side? I don't know. Right now, since this began, and it happened this morning, city people were there with lights on their foreheads at quarter after 6:00 in the morning. I've told there's an ordinance about that, that did not apply. I woke up at 6:15 this morning with the bang, 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 beep, beep, beep. From the garbage trucks, they needed to come partly in because our garbage cans can't be out there. There is no safe place and, I'm so sorry. In this whole entire thing, you have not provided me a safe place to walk. When I got out to come down here, the man that was taking out the big pieces of wood, because the road is paved now, by the way, it got paved today. Uh, he said, don't walk over there, it's hazardous to walk over there. That was one of the people that you've hired to do whatever they've done. Guess what? I've been doing that. March, all of this summer, and now we're in the fall. And I still don't have a driveway. I cannot come in my own driveway and take out my own groceries. And I wake up every day wondering if I'm gonna have a flood in my basement. This has gotta stop, something has to change. And I invite you to come to my house tomorrow afternoon and see what I live with. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager, I know council, as I indicated earlier, had received the letter from, I believe, uh, all of these residents that had signed on to a, a letter to council that was conveyed to us along with images and, uh, plenty of images. We can't give direction and we can't discuss, but, um, it's my understanding, city hall is working on this, that they know about it. And do you have, what can you share, I guess, with us? At this point, anything?
Yeah, I can share that, and certainly, Public Works Director Robbie can, can give you an update on the project itself. Yeah, I mean, I think the descriptions that folks provided are, are accurate. The cause of them, I think, is really the question that we're trying to figure out. We've had, I know this, I'm sure this is gonna not please them with everything I tell them, but we've had these situations before when we have construction projects very close to the bodies of water. Uh, you, nobody was on the council at the time, but we did Bowen Street about 10 years ago, uh, at the very south end near the river, had some similar situations and we had to work with the residents, um, in terms of that. Groundwater is very high in this area, it's always been very high in this area. But it seems as though some of these some pumps are now doing more frequent, others are actually doing less frequent. So, underground water movement is a very, you know, a difficult thing to track. Um, but we are actively working on it. If there's any invitation, I would gladly accept that. I've been out there before, I was out there today. Uh, and, and I'm familiar with the situation, but I think our, our folks in Public Works are, are best equipped to do that. The, this information has been forwarded to our insurance company because there were some claims there. So, we forwarded to our insurance company who will investigate it as well. They'll come back and be asking us questions as well. So, uh, if the council would like to put this on a future agenda, that would be appropriate. Um, but at the same time, it may, there may be some points where it may be cause for a closed session, uh, because the nature of a potential lawsuit.
Sure. Well, future agenda items is later on, on the agenda, we can't give direction now on that one. Um, but I suspect, I saw some head nodding. Um, so I suspect we may hear from that, about that topic later in this meeting. And we'll go from there. Okay. Uh, moving on to consent agenda. I don't have anyone registered to speak to any consent agenda, I know it's a relatively short consent. I don't see anyone, if anyone is interested in speaking to consent, please come up now. If not, I'll take a motion and a second for consent.
So move to second.
Discussion on those. I see none. If, clerk, if you could take the role on consent agenda.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Bealow.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Mughawar.
Aye.
Carried six.
Moving on to pending ordinances, we have a few, these are all second readings, so we'll take action on all of them tonight. Ordinance 24-540, amend sections 27A-8 and 27A-10 of municipal code to designate West 12th Avenue as a through street at the intersection of West 12th Avenue and Minnesota Street. Transportation committee recommends approval. Take a motion and a second.
Move it. Second.
Any discussion? I see none, please take the role.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Bealow.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Mughawar.
Aye.
Carried six.
Ordinance 24-541, amend section 27A-11 of the municipal code to remove a bus loading zone on Hazel Street and a handicap parking area on Melvin Avenue due to relocation of the school facilities in and around the new Menominee Elementary School site. Transportation committee recommends approval.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. If you'll take the role on 24-541.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Bealow.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Mughawar.
Aye.
Carried six.
Next up, ordinance 24-542, amend sections 27A-11 of municipal code to change no parking restrictions on Algoa Boulevard in front of the University of Wisconsin Oshkosh, Albee Hall. From no parking to 60 minute parking, transportation committee recommends approval.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Nichols.
Thanks, just a question, if, um, I, I support doing this. I guess my question is, with the recent change in bus routes, did the city perform any evaluation of whether or not we should open up parking in places where it didn't otherwise exist? Or are we depending on the neighboring residents to do this themselves?
In the case of the Albee Hall one?
Uh, in case, generally, I know Albee Hall, UWO requested it and, and I think that's, that's fine and I agree with this and I'm gonna vote yes here. I guess, just generally speaking, did we, did we perform any evaluation as a city when we moved those routes about parking?
We generally, it, it generally doesn't impact a great deal of parking, so I would say we take it on a case by case basis.
So we depend on the residents to tell us?
Yeah.
Okay.
Pretty much.
Thanks.
Good question. Any other discussion? If you'll take the role on 24-542.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Bealow.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Mughawar.
Aye.
Carried six.
Ordinance 24-543, amend sections 27A-11 of the municipal code. Update parking regulations on Nebraska Street and 10th Avenue adjacent to Grace Lutheran School and Church. Transportation committee recommends approval.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? If you'll take the role.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Bealow.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Mughawar.
Aye.
Carried six.
Ordinance 24-544, adopt parking lot maps and associated regulations within appendix 27B of the municipal code for the rec department, Grand South and 200 West parking lots. Transportation committee recommends approval.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. If you'll take the role in 24-544.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Bealow.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Mughawar.
Aye.
Carried six.
Final pending ordinance, ordinance 24-545, approve zone change from neighborhood mixed use district, to neighborhood mixed use district with a planned development overlay at 1700 Oregon Street. Plan commission recommends approval.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. I see none, if you'll take the role on 24-545.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Bealow.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Mughawar.
Aye.
Carried six.
New resolutions, we have resolution 24-546, approve general development plan and specific implementation plan for a mixed use building at 1700 Oregon Street. Plan commission recommends approval.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion on this. Deputy mayor.
Just want to say quick that I love the creativity in, in allowing, uh, different usages for, uh, you know, buildings that can be used for apartments that hadn't been in the past.
If there's nothing else, if you'll take the role in 24-546.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Bealow.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Mughawar.
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution 24-547, approve professional services agreement with Associated Appraisal Consultants, Inc. for 2025 commercial assessment reevaluation.
Move it.
Second.
I'm gonna say discussion, but I think Councilmember Nichols, uh, is gonna start us off right there.
So, and, uh, there were some correspondence over the weekend, uh, between myself, city attorney, city manager, on this. I, I know that with the, with the prior revaluation firm, um, at this point, we are not intending to pursue a claim, but I think there's still a conversation to be had there. With that, and with, because with the response that I got, I want to make sure that we're adequately protected this time around. I think that we've went, gone through a revaluation once and that was painful and confusing, as probably they always are. This time around, I want to make sure that while it might still be painful and confusing to an extent, because they always are, that we're adequately protected if we end up in the same position we were in. So, I, I have a couple of questions. Um, it sounds like we have not circulated a contract with this company yet, is that right?
Correct.
And so have we had conversations with them about what happens if they're not within that 10% remedy?
I'm gonna turn to putting, uh, Mrs. Kowski on the spot early on, this is her first meeting that she sat in, but she's ready for the, she's, she's been anticipating the question, so thank you.
We, and Mark is here as well from AAC to be able to kind of fill in some as well. Yes, we have had some conversations with them, very good conversations. And we also met with the DOR earlier today as well to kind of keep that conversation going. Mark is aware of the issues that we've had this year and, and we've spoken to him about the possibility of putting some verbiage in the contract to make sure that he, being in the business, he understands that we're hoping that we can meet compliance and he is okay with that language being put in the contract that the scope of work would include a compliance requirement.
Thank you, and just so I understand, this is our last shot. If we are not compliant at the end of the 2025 year, then the state's gonna walk in the door and say that they're gonna take over Forest. Do I have that right?
Yes.
Yeah, but we had a great conversation with the Department of Revenue today. And, uh, they gave us some suggestions that we can engage and maybe time our board of review a little differently that would allow us to, uh, be aware of potential issues that might cause a compliance issue. And then the contractor could work directly with the DOR to reconcile those things. Uh, there was, we had some really good conversations and, uh, so I think we can, there's other things we can do in addition to just putting it in there, because you're right, if we, if we fail, that doesn't do anybody any good. So, this is a no-fail provision.
Cool, and, and I guess, that's a good segue into my next question. So, is the same team from Oshkosh performing the same duties that they were in the last revaluation? My understanding is that we did, there was some lateness on behalf of Tyler, um, that we excused that lateness, that we were worried about running into the board of review. Is it the same people that are running that and have we already circulated the timeline with the new vendor?
Actually, the new timeline was a suggestion from the vendor. And it's something that other communities have done when they've done revaluations. Kind of, it is typical to extend it out to give yourself some wiggle room there. Um, so, yes, it'll be the same staff doing the residential side of it, but for the commercial side, which is what the contract, contract is for, they're aware of our expectations with extending it out a little bit.
Okay, and is that written down anywhere?
Not yet.
I don't think, not yet.
It will be, I mean, that's what we're gonna be working on and I think Sarah and the rest of the staff are aware of that. And, again, we had a good conversation with the DOR about things we can do to, uh, even though this contract is 285,000, we know that that's an issue. Uh, I think that there's things we can do with the residential to keep the cost down.
Got it, and, and to confirm that point, so we are, I know at one point, we were talking about statistical analysis for the residential side. We've learned now that we have to do a full revaluation of residential and commercial?
No, we, I think we can, how would?
We have some wiggle room.
What, what does that mean?
We still have to do the revaluation and, um, with our conversation with the DOR today, um, they outlined to us a little bit clearer what their expectations are. And we still have to meet our statutory requirements, which are doing the revaluation and getting our evaluations, um, into that percentage. As long as we get commercial and residential closer, the DOR will be much happier with that.
Well, as long as the DOR is happy. I think, um, and I say that completely sarcastically, if it wasn't fair. I, I guess the, the last thing I'll say, and I'll listen, I, I know that other people are gonna ask questions and I'll listen to what you're all's answers are. Uh, I think what I would prefer before voting on this is that we had a memo from staff completely outlining the process and those provisions for recourse, because we didn't have it last time around. Um, we're end up, we're gonna spend $500,000 on a $200,000 project, uh, to hopefully get it right. And I'm looking at the gentleman in the row and I have faith that we're gonna get it right. Um, and I'm seeing his head nod, so for the cameras that can't see it. Um, and I know that I'm giving you a hard time, but I just, I think that having all of this spelled out is probably timely for council. This was complicated at the outset, it was even further complicated by the DOR, uh, value, or re, I guess, evaluation of our valuation. And now I'm hearing that there's some wiggle room, um, on how we can actually perform the residential valuation. And I, I think that it's just, it's timely for not only the seven of us to understand what that looks like, but for the citizens of Oshkosh to, to know what that looks like. And I think we should have that before we vote on a $285,000 deal that isn't papered yet. Um, so I, I'll, I'll yield the floor then.
Councilmember Larson, followed by Councilmember Flom.
Yeah, I'm gonna echo most of what DJ said in the.
Yeah, I'm going to echo most of what DJ said in the same, with regards to this, this actual agenda item, this is a vote, as I understand it correctly if I'm wrong, this is a vote to allow staff to move forward with this and this will be the last step if we vote yes, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, in that case, I would, I'm not putting words in your mouth, I would prefer to either table this or I'll vote no on it for now so that we can have a concrete plan before we say yes. Most of us weren't here when these decisions were made the last time, but we certainly will take the brunt of this if it goes poorly or hopefully the claim if it goes well, it'll be great. So I would love to see some of that before we get all the way formally to saying yes on this. With this plan, in the in the packet, is the formal plan to a degree or not quite everything?
The proposal's in your agenda packet, but the contract is not.
Perfect. So with regards to the proposal, this is a full entry and exterior of all commercial? Am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, but we didn't do that last time for commercial, correct?
We did it for commercial as well.
Yes.
Every single commercial property got entered?
It was, that's.
Attempted.
Okay.
We try, some people don't always let us in.
Mine did not and they weren't and nobody asked, but maybe that was part of the problem. So we, not to be speculative, so, but residential was not, correct? Residential was all statistical?
No, no, that was, that was internal.
That was also internal.
Okay.
But not everybody's house got?
Sure.
Got done because they didn't answer the call or something.
Got it, and I'm sorry I missed that previously, that's great to know now. That was it. Thank you.
Councilmember Flom followed by Councilmember Esslinger.
Yeah, can I echo some of those points? I don't necessarily feel 100% comfortable moving forward with this until some of those provisions are at least laid out to us. One of the other things that we really would like to see is kind of the plan moving forward for communicating with the public about this because there's a lot of hearsay moving around, there's a lot of people who may have some of the story, may not have all the story, may be a little bit confused about why we have to revalue again. I really would like to see that laid out very clearly to the public and all those questions being answered because people are frankly not going to be happy. And so I would be okay with laying this over at least until we have a little bit more information, but I do like what I see in terms of the, in terms of the credentials here of the of the vendor. So I appreciate that, but I just have a couple of things that I would like to be tightened up and I will, you know, kind of reflect back on Councilmember Nichols' point and Larson's points about that. But for me, public-facing information that people can readily access and that we're going to be proactive with PSAs, I really, really would like to see that because I feel like that's where we did, to a degree, could have been a little bit better last time around.
I can actually mention that at my previous position with the city of Berlin, we contracted with AAC and they have a wonderful outreach with media because obviously Berlin's much smaller, we don't have the capabilities that Oshkosh did. And they have all of these beautiful documents, flow charts, things that help really break it down to residents, what's going on. Obviously, this one will be a little different because we're going to have to tweak it based on it being revaluation number two, but the idea of they they really know how to break it down on a good level and get that information out to residents in the right way, I think that with the combination of Oshkosh media will really help.
Right, because people are going to be asking, you know, we just did a reval, why do we have to do one again? And we did, what we did do well last time around is we, you know, explaining the mill rate, things like that, but you know, as to why we're approaching this again, that's the sticking point for me, that's what I would really like to see, so I appreciate that.
There is no urgency that this has to get approved tonight. We can, you know, we can certainly, what I would say, I wouldn't guarantee we'd have it back in two weeks because we may, you know, we may need to work through the language of the agreement and everything. So I would not, you know, ask for a date specific, it's like bring the, bring the contract back when it's ready for council review and approval and we can do that. And I'm, I think we talked about that today, we're very comfortable with council. There are a lot of times we do bring contracts, other times we have it worded this way. Given the nature of this one, totally understand.
Councilmember Esslinger followed by Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the answers to Councilmember Nichols' questions kind of piqued my interest and that was in regards to being compliant with the state, some type of terminology in a contract that they will be or, okay, so as a Realtor, I'm more, I understand the appraising concept, which I found out is different from the appraisal, or from the assessor. But they're both coming up with factual numbers. One is more of a, all the details to the home mitigating factors, material adverse defects, and I think the the assessor is more of a mathematical calculation based on the homes that have sold. That's my take on it. So my question to anyone on the staff is how do you guarantee that you're going to be compliant? Because that sounds contrived. Because a number is a number and if you come up with that number, and this happens all the times with appraisers, they want a home appraised for whatever divorce or whatever the case may be, someone wanted high, someone wants it low, and then you come, they come in and they say, well, make make sure it's high, you know, because I, because of this reason. Well, you don't do that. The number is the number. So if if an assessor comes back and says, here's the number and it's outside of the purview, how do you then just artificially come up with a number that fits what the state wants it to be? I'm confused.
Well, it's, it is different, but I can tell you that the conversation we had with the Department of Revenue today, they gave us some suggestions on how we can work closely with them, closer than I think our previous contractor did to to ensure that. I can tell you that this is, I've never experienced this in all my time doing, being involved with cities that have done assessments, I don't think Sarah has either.
Never.
So this is extremely unusual. This should, the norm should be you get near 100% and that's, I haven't seen anything like this previously, so I can't just blindly say, oh, it'll never happen because it just happened. But at the same time, the DOR gave some very good suggestions. They had, they had the person in Madison that's in charge of the program, the regional person, as well as a person who formerly worked for us. They all gave us pointers on things we can do well in advance, not spin the wheel and see where the number ends up and it's like, I'm sorry, you're at 89% again, sorry, you lose. It's really more about here's how we can make sure that when an evaluation, when when they evaluate how we did in terms of the equalized value, that will fall very close as we have in the past.
Okay, I think I understood that.
What it is, is they specifically suggested start talking to us in May and have your board of review later because one of the, one of the real keys with that one is we've done our, we've historically done our board of review very, you know, relatively early, I wouldn't say very early, relatively early, July. The board, the state Department of Revenue comes out with the equalized value in August. If we wait until after they give us our equalized value, then we know where our landing spot needs to be. So it's sort of like an open book test versus a non-open book test. You'll know where you need to land and then the firm can take a look and say, all right, where are we, where are we looking to land? If we're not looking to land at 100%, why not? And they can take a look at those things and that was the confidence level.
See if they might have missed something or looked at a sale the wrong way or not use the data in the same way that the state did. So they'll have the ability to go back and look at this, because they're using the same data the state is to make sure that their numbers are matching what the states are. Does that help a little bit?
Yeah, well, and then it gets back to the question I think I asked when we were talking about doing the residential. I asked this question before, if the state has their analysis and they have their number, why are we playing this game of we come up with our number, we submit it and it's wrong? And so you got to go back and redo it again. We have the number, but yours is wrong and you have to go back and do it again and spend $285,000 doing it.
I don't know if I would say wrong is the right word, it's just we're not in the same.
Incorrect.
That's a tough one. Mark?
Since you're here.
I mean, I know these aren't, these aren't your rules, I just, again, this is one of these state things, it's just, they do these insane things that they know, it's just a game. And then we have to spend the money to go back and do this and I don't know if the criteria that they use is the same as the assessors or not. And so if if you're using two different formulas or approaches on how to get the number, well, then clearly you can come up with two different numbers. But if you submit the number and they say, no, that's wrong, then to get it into compliance, you're just, you're just creating the number, you're not, you're not getting the number based on an analysis, you're just creating the number then. Anyone can do that.
Yeah, I think I'd said last time, I don't necessarily agree with the method that we are given and the state does, they take a different approach using the same data. They're taking a look on a macro level and they want to make sure that there's equity with, between the classes. Our role in in these contracts is to make sure each property, you can take a look at one property versus another and be able to explain how that done. That might be an appropriate thing for for Mark to comment on because that's, that's what his job is, but the state does a different approach to arrive at equalized value than we do to arrive at assessed value using the exact same data. I agree with you, Councilor Esslinger, I just think that there is a much better way to do this, but the state of Wisconsin, I can't, all I can do is play by the rulebook I'm given and the rulebook says they do equalized value, we do assessments and we'll compare them at the end.
Well, like I said, I hope I live to see the day where we just don't play this game anymore, coming up with value based on someone's home or businesses.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that it should be done at the, at the, at least county level, if not a regional level, but that's me and they might not like that because it's less business for them, but same number of properties, but anyway, that's another story. But I share your concerns, but I don't, I don't necessarily make those rules.
Okay, so what do you suggest the council does here?
Well, I'm entirely comfortable if the council merely directs us to come back with the contract prior to final council approval.
So a layover would be?
Yeah, layover, don't do it date-specific because we might not get it two weeks from tonight, we might, it just depends, but we'll work on it. If you had approved it, if you had approved it tonight, we're going to go back and draw up a contract and then we would sign it in accordance with the direction from council. All you're asking us to do is bring it back one more time and you can do that. We might miss a meeting and then we got to wait another three weeks, go, there'll be three weeks between the next meetings. You know, I would say certainly by then we would have it, we might not get it in two weeks, that's going to depend because we normally have to have it like a week before. So I won't, I won't promise the 22nd, but I feel very confident that by the first meeting in November, we'd, we'd be back with a contract for your review and approval.
All right, Mayor, I don't know if there's anyone else that wants to speak, but if there's not, then I just move to lay it over then.
Don't second that because yes, there is, sorry guys, we will come back for a motion and that, it sounds like there's some consensus, but Councilmember Nichols wants to go next.
Thank you, and I do share Councilmember Esslinger's frustration with the process, I think that we all do, so hopefully DOR is listening and someone is listening. And I will say that the City Manager's Office and City Attorney's Office is helping with a resolution to our state representatives to that point to say this process could be better. So that'll come before council and we can actually decide what we want that language to be to our two representatives and two senators in Madison and we can send it to the DOR and the governor and the president and everyone, whoever we want to send it to. So we can figure that out. One thing I wanted to mention is I'd happy to look at the contract and would love to see that language. I don't want to make it sound like we're going to step on the City Attorney's Office in reviewing actual language of the contract, we pay them to do that, but certainly I would love to see a memo saying kind of how we got here and then what we plan to do internally and externally and then what recourse is available if we fail again, both against the third party, but then also what our plan is to do with the state. I know that there is, there are options there as well and so I can make that motion unless Councilmember Esslinger, you wanted to make the motion. Did you, I'll let the mayor speak first.
If you don't mind, and then we'll come right back to you if that's all right. One thing I haven't heard and I don't, I don't ever speak for the whole body, but one thing I haven't heard is, is concern over necessarily the proposal that's in front of us, it's really over protection of the taxpayers. That's, that's what I'm hearing up here. I think that's, that's probably unequivocal and unanimous in that and making sure that taxpayers are protected. So I just wanted to say that out loud for the company who's giving us the proposal here. I have a question for you if you don't mind, if you could come up to the microphone, I have one simple one, I think, and I'll give you, I'll drag it out while you walk on up. Looking through your proposal, appreciate the data, the information that you provided regarding, you know, work you've done with other communities, the, I think it's the price-related differential, that's what we're really talking about, like the differential of how close are we getting to 100%? How close are we getting to 1.0 here? You guys are pretty good on that. In your 2023 and 2022 work, do you want to talk about, talk yourselves up a little bit on terms of how close you got or like, you know, that, the gap that you guys typically experience?
So.
Pull a little closer, it'll pick up.
So just pointing out to what Mark said, equalized value is the macro level, right? It's all classes, it's, it's an estimate that the DOR puts together based on new construction and community, economic changes due to sales, things like that. As an assessor, we're responsible for setting market value for each individual property. Most of the time, if everything aligns well, we're within a very small percentage of what equalized value indicates. You're in a market that we've been in the last three to four years, we've had pretty significant appreciation and you've also seen pretty significant increases in the equalized value side and also on the commercial side, which generally speaking, we don't see that often where you're seeing double-digit appreciation. So working with DOR to understand the local level is going to be really important for the city, stratifying sales out by multifamily, retail, office and helping them review their equalized value because perhaps it might be higher than it should be. And so that's going to be really key to getting this back into compliance so that whatever the values are set on all the local properties at the end of the day, will be within an acceptable range, which is 10% to get you guys back into compliance. I'm not going to say we're at 100, we might be at 98, but our values are 100% and the state the next year will have to readjust down to match our numbers. Currently, we're not a single-value state where they adopt our numbers as their numbers and so that's why there's always kind of a disconnect. So it's just good communication with them prior to getting to this point and their fifth, sixth year out of compliance. You work on this, you know, four years ago and you start working with them to help them shape their equalized value that's closer to reality, so.
Okay, appreciate that. I think Deputy Mayor's got a question maybe too.
Actually not for you, so if anybody else has a question for.
Nope.
All right, thank you.
No, I just wanted to say this feels very much like paying proper, or income taxes at the end of the year where you submit what you owe them and then they tell you if you're right or wrong, well, just cut out the middleman. So I 100% agree with Councilmember Esslinger's frustration and I think everybody's up here about the whole process and the most encouraging thing to me that I've heard today is that you're still meeting with DOR and you met with them today and that we're going to have a plan to get in sync with them better next time. That as much as this entire thing stinks, I don't want it happening again and I think, you know, that's what we're looking at, the language for the contract, but we also need but we also need to be in the same playbook with them to make sure that when we submit ours next time, we have confidence that it's going to be good. So please continue to do that and, and use all the resources possible that we can to make sure that that happens. If there's no other commentary, I think we may have a motion to lay over.
I can do that. I'll make a motion to lay over, but like I've done before, I'd like to add a specific requirement to that motion to lay over, and it would be that we receive the memo that I mentioned. Again, just to run through those things one more time, it's what we've done before, how we got to this point, what we plan to do differently in the future, both internally and externally with the third party, working with the DOR, any of those things, and what recourse will be available if we are again out of compliance. I guess we should also add, if we are out of compliance, what that means in terms of the state coming in to do that differently. I think that would, and the reason why I'm making the motion that way is so that all of us are speaking out of the same playbook, if we are getting questions from residents about how do we end up here, and what are we doing differently, and also ensuring that we are protected contractually in a way that we weren't before.
I will second that.
Any discussion on the motion to lay over as detailed by Councilmember Nichols? If you'll take the vote, the roll on motion to lay over.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Fohm?
Aye.
Beulah?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Kerit Six?
Resolution 24548, approved professional services agreement with Associated Appraisal Consultants, Inc., for three-year annual maintenance for commercial assessment services. Take a motion in a second to at least discuss.
Move it.
Second.
Would it be appropriate to connect this with the first one? Seems like it.
It's entirely up to you, it is a very different contract, but if, if it would make you feel more comfortable, it's not urgent that we, we got to have this contract so they can get started, we don't need...
Well, I guess my question would be, if we're going to go with one to provide the full revale, generally, we would probably go with that same firm to, to provide the maintenance services for the next, well, in this case, three years. Seems, seems connected.
Yep.
Okay.
No, no concern from staff for you to lay it over?
Would there be a motion to lay over, to, lay over to when 547 returns? Second.
I'm sorry.
Fohm.
Fohm. Fohm, Nichols, thank you.
Is that clear for, I just want to make sure I said that clear enough, it'll be disconnected with that whenever you bring the other one back, okay. If there's no discussion on that, we'll take the roll on motion to lay over 548.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Fohm?
Aye.
Beulah?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Kerit Six?
Onto council discussion, direction of City Manager, future agenda items. Councilmember Esslinger.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. A couple meetings ago, I think it was, we talked about the issue of council members bringing forward something to put on the agenda, and I, I don't know where we're at on that, so just maybe a little clarification or an update, or...
Yep, it was resting in my hands, working on that, and hoping to have something for council to, to look at shortly.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Oh, boy. What did I say wrong? No, just kidding. Councilmember Nichols, followed by Councilmember Larson.
So I guess I just want to mention, before we get too far away from the revaluation, I would like to discuss, I think right now, this is, this is the point where we would look for heads nodding, is that, is that, is that this part of the agenda?
Ish.
Ish, ish, okay. I, I would like just to explore regular intervals of valuation, rather than waiting for non-compliance, and then operating within that framework. I think, I'm not saying I'm sold on the idea, I've lived in places that have done that before, I just want to understand kind of, what do other municipalities do in Wisconsin? What are the advantages, what are the disadvantages, what are the costs? I think that would be helpful, and that way we're talking about what we're doing in the future, not only with this particular revaluation, but also what's our plan to make sure that we remain compliant long-term? So that's...
Are you specifically, I'm sorry, are you specifically talking about the revale?
I'm talking about the revale process, rather than waiting until non-compliance, than having a timeline in which we have to become compliant, looking at regular revaluations every three or four years.
Oh, in the future, not this one, just like, once this one's done, what are we doing?
So we finish it in '25, and then we do it again in '29, and we do it again in '33.
Instead of just waiting until we fall out of compliance again.
That way people build a reflex, that's the goal, so you know where, what my argument would be later. But that's, I would like to explore it and understand it.
Okay, so exploring more frequent revales?
Yeah.
Okay, that I understand.
Yeah, I think, and I don't, I won't put words in his mouth, but, you know, what's a trigger point that would not necessarily force staff to do something, but would absolutely force staff to, say, council, you know, we need to reevaluate, we need to have this discussion. Those discussions did happen in the past, but it was more, quite honestly, it was more in passing than it was formalized, in, in my own opinion, I was, we were part of several conversations, but we've built in triggers, or we've built in parameters within a lot of our finance policies, Long Beach Finance has done a good job of that over the last several years, creating some, some guardrails maybe, or just at least having more information.
I think that's exactly right. So if we looked at, let's do it every three years, no matter what, or we look at, let's do it, let's let council decide, because if 2020 happens again, we might say, this isn't the year to do it, and we don't have to.
And that's what happened in 2021.
Right, so building in those guardrails, but at least having the policy in place, that's exactly what I'd, I'd like to look at.
Trigger, okay. I think it was Councilmember Larson, followed by Councilmember Fohm.
Yeah, DJ stole my first one exactly, that I'd like to discuss more, doing a revaluation more often, because that'll make this easier, and it has not been easy so far, it's been hard. So I'd like to do it better going forward, and obviously, the folks who spoke this morning, we should talk more about Seventh Street, those impacts, what's going to happen, why it's happening, all that kind of stuff.
In one second, I think. Well, no, we're under a future agenda, that's fine.
Yeah, this is the right place, isn't it?
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
To that point, just while we're talking about the Seventh Street, just quick, very quickly, could I ask that we have an update at the next meeting?
That's what I kind of thought Chris was saying, so yeah.
More or less, yeah.
Yeah, more or less.
We need, to not being able to discuss it after hearing about it tonight is pretty daunting, it doesn't feel great, because we want to learn about it, we want to know about it, we all want to help, that's the point.
Please know that we are not waiting for two weeks, we're going to be, we're going to continue to work on this, despite what they said, I really think we have been working on it, but I think there's a lot of stress with those folks, it's understandable, I've had experiences with some pumps, I understand. So I'll, and I, if I'm invited, I'll go out there, but the fact that they've, they've put lawsuits on the table, so we may need to have a closed session with the council as well. Not to keep anything from them, but just to be, just to lay out what, what, what the council's options might be. So we'll, we'll, we got on the agenda.
It'd be good to know more, so we, so we can actually talk about it, because these are real concerns and they're important.
Yep, very good.
Councilmember Fohm.
Well, Chris stole my thunder on that one. So with that, I 100% agree, both on the regular, or at least tripwire intervals for revales, and then for Seventh Avenue as well, I think that's incredibly important. I understand we may need to go in closed session, because there is potential litigation on the table, but I'm okay with that if we need to, I just think we need to be updated regularly, and absolutely, I understand you're not waiting for direction from us on this, that's an operations issue, so you guys are already on it, but I would just like an update as soon as we could get one.
Very good. Any other discussion, direction, future agenda items? Upcoming meetings and workshops, workshop on Underground Utilities, that will be October 22nd, meeting at 5:00 PM. Any information that's available, you're probably already smiling, because I'm going to say if you can get anything that you want us to read that night, maybe in advance.
Anything, I think James is already working on it.
Excellent, just...
The draft is in your inbox.
There we go, perfect. Just allows us the opportunity to ask questions and engage instead of reading.
As you can see, the 22nd is going to be...
I was going to comment on that, tonight's a little lighter, it looks like we're going to make up for it in, in two weeks. Update on City Hall, facility study, that is an in-meeting workshop, sounds like at the front end probably, but if the meeting, if the meeting agenda is, depending on how it's organized, if it's more appropriate to have that at the end of the meeting, that, that might be appropriate instead of front-loading it.